Mr. Hummel?
Here.
Carol, who's the county clerk's office? Please stand and join us in praying for this case to be declared.
Dear Lord, please help us conduct this meeting in a proper way. Please help us, please help our military to be safe wherever they may be, bring them back safely to their families, and please help us with the rain that we need. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. Mr. Deskin.
Good morning. Let's be very open and honest with each other this morning. The bond election will determine how many of our county citizens actually want our courthouse to be restored. My guess is that the vast majority of our citizens do not want to spend ten or fifteen million dollars for restoration and at the same time give our courthouse its grounds and our existing jail to the state, i.e. the Texas Historical Commission. Such a vote would leave the citizens of Corrins County to pay for the maintenance and upkeep of restoration forever, just giving the state a signed blank check. We know that in the case of Wharton County, replacing doorknobs on the restored building costs about seven hundred and fifty dollars a pop. Our biggest proponents for a restored courthouse include the Texas Historical Commission, the Corrins County Historical Society, the district judge, and a former county judge. Their total focus is restore our ancestral courthouse. Other more pressing priorities like building a new jail, increasing law enforcement personnel, their pay, and improving their equipment, improving our county roads and bridges, and hiring a competent and professional road administrator, targeting improved pay and benefits for departments that are competing with the local economy, are but a few of the priorities which the restoration gap don't care about. Their tunnel mission approach is restore the courthouse at any cost. Thank God that the leadership of this court, unlike the last court, is allowing our citizens to vote the American way. I personally would like to see our existing courthouse with its wings included repaired and made usable, or what would make more sense from a fiscal standpoint, build a new courthouse. I think that District Judge Randy Clapp, the District Judge of three-twenty-ninth Judicial District summed up courthouse restoration completely when he stated that restoration is incredibly expensive, that it will not be cost-effective, and as in the case of Wharton County, it will not be functional, unquote, i.e. the gallery overlooking the district courtroom can't be used because the rails are too low and the acoustics of the building is so poor that the court proceedings can't be heard properly. I expect the vast majority of the county citizens to vote no, for restoration of the bond election. Then and only then will Commissioner's Court be able to move on to higher priority county priorities. Thank you.
Mr. Stinson.
Thank you. There seems to be some misunderstanding about the plans and hope I have in Corrins County. So let me explain.
Hold on one second, Mr. Stinson, Carol. Yeah. Hold on one second. I'm sorry, Mr. Stinson. This light goes on and then it goes off.
I know.
I don't know if we have a short.
It may be in that plug. I've tried.
Power. That light, that text light. Try again. See if it doesn't work. It's back on.
It's a plug there. That's a fault.
Well, no, it reset.
Yeah, he said that.
It turned off soon. Turned on. Do you have it?
I don't know.
Yes.
His mic isn't working though.
No, it's not. It's in the plug. It's certainly set.
That's a short between this and the operator there.
Sorry, Mr. Stinson. There you go. There you go. Thank you. Sorry. What are we starting, Mr. Stinson? We're sorry.
There seems to be some misunderstanding about the plans and hope I have in Corrins County. So let me explain. Citizens of Corrins County, the level of country roads are in need of, or in need of help. The chair of being used on county roads is destroying their cars and trucks. I travel on some. The speeds excess five miles an hour were destroying their tires. Some travel in the mortgage, avoid dropping off in deep holes. Mail carriers cannot make deliveries in bad weather. The school buses are being destroyed by bad roads. Please fix our roads. Our county is being overrun by break-ins where household items are being stolen. I live in a cottage, and in the two-hundred, in the four-hundred block that I live in, three houses have been built into. My home has a alarm system, but it didn't keep up to make it into my garage. There's a large warehouse behind the grocery store in Kennedy. We noticed a few days ago that someone ripped air from this around and took it. Please wish to restore it. Give some of our tax dollars for passing the roads and police protection. The citizens of Corrins County will hold you responsible for protection and good roads. Thank you. Let me explain my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Yarder.
Good morning. I'm here to speak this morning on two subjects, actually, roads and law enforcement. One of the things I've seen about the Commissioner's Court is there is no plan, no priority of spending of funds in the execution of budget. We do approve a budget, but it's only for one year, but there is no extensive plan that goes past one year. We don't have a five-year plan. We don't have a ten-year plan. We don't have a fifteen-year plan. I'd like to see where the county Commissioner's Court would prioritize the projects within the county that would benefit most people. We have an oil boom going on, and approximately half the population of this county lives in the country. Yet at this point, it appears that they will receive the least benefit. Roads are in bad, bad shape. I drove the entire length of the county road that I live on yesterday. On the far east end of County Road 330, there's a saw spot that's probably thirty to forty feet long in the width of the road. And I almost got stuck in it. It's like driving in a tappet type road. And it's about a foot and a foot and a half deep. That is as significant safety hazard on County Road 330 and the county as we miss. And I'm maintaining these roads until somebody gets hurt, and they're going to be live. But I'd like to see that the county Commissioner's Court do something that the past Commissioner's Courts have not done, and that sit down and prioritize those things that need to be done and where we need to spend our money now and into the future. I can assure you that most people who live out in county roads want their roads fixed first, and they could care less about that courthouse being built until the projects like county roads and law enforcement are taken care of, and then we can address the courthouse. Thank you.
Ms. Yarder.
I wanted to address a couple of items. One of them would be the roads again, because I had to live out on the county road 330, and it's extremely poor shape at the current time. In fact, we've considered redoing our entrance to our, to our property so that it would come in shortly with the paper then, because it's so bad to take our vehicles, but on our vehicle we get down the road. The other item I'd like to speak on is attorney's fees that I'm on was requested that the county paid. And the county approved attorney's fees payment at the last, or at a previous session, and that is an issue that needs to be, I think, if you're going to revisit it, you have to address it from a couple of standpoints. One of them is whether or not to grade public necessity. The other is whether it's some budget item that has to meet the emergency requirement. And that means it has to come, has to be any grade public necessity, and that item to be paid. If it's something that you can even revisit in the current term, that's something that you'll have to address. It's not discretionary because she was sued by the state and under section one fifty-seven point oh-six-one, she was sued under, under the state tax, which is a nonparticular, which is a political entity. As the political entity, she can't, you have no discretion, I have no attorney's fee that we're not awarded in the court, yes, by the judge or the jury. Now, I'd ask y'all, if you're going to revisit the issue, you need to check and see if you can do so in a subsequent term of the court, or in a subsequent term, or just a subsequent meeting. And if you're going to rescind or modify it, you need to rescind the other one before you modify this one. Thank you.
Ms. Hall.
I would just briefly like to respectfully request the court to address the issue of where our county sits with its road and bridge. I mean, it just seems to be something that constantly gets put on the back burner. We have this huge amount of funds coming in, and we tend to focus, we've been focusing a lot on the restoration of the courthouse. Not saying that something doesn't need to be done there, certainly, it needs to be looked at, but we certainly have other priorities. And the number one priority is serving our citizens. That's, that's what the tax is to be used for. And the people that live in the county pay taxes. They pay taxes. They pay your salaries. They don't get a lot of benefit, you know, they have to be able to get to town from their votes. They don't get a lot of benefit from new buildings. I mean, we're looking at the possibility of having over ten million dollars in building structure here, that our citizens can come and how they utilize that, I don't know, but they do need to be able to utilize their roads. And, you know, one thing that you've got to have is a plan. We have to have a scope and sequence. We have to have a plan for the future, a five-year plan, a ten-year plan of where we're going with the infrastructure in this county. We cannot continue to display cliche that just turns to powder. And honestly, we're quite lucky that we haven't had a lot of rain, not to say that we don't need it, I pay for it daily, but I can imagine how many trucks we'd be pulling out and stuck in this baby powder that we're, we're driving through right now. And it's just nonsense that we cannot spend money, when you look at the amount of money that's spent, a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars is spent on material this last past year on our county roads, over five hundred miles of county roads, which is really not fiscal responsibility. It's not businesslike. We need a road and bridge administrator that has business skills and management skills. We've got to look in this direction if we're going to progress and have an infrastructure that our county can use. Thank you.
Again, the next item on the agenda, number six, is to review and or correct Commissioner's Court minutes for the month of August two thousand and eleven, August third, ninth, sixteenth, twenty-seventh, seventeen, twenty-third, twenty-sixth, thirtieth, and thirty-first. On August third, does anybody review the minutes?
I don't have any.
You don't have any minutes? Oh, did you pick your package up early? Still, we made copies of these for everybody who can remember.
Sorry, my bad.
Can we get y'all minutes?
I don't have any.
Sheriff, do you know where she came from? Do you see her? She had them all out there for y'all yesterday. I was wrong. Did you even pick your package up yesterday?
Yeah, I did. I did.
I know she should have burned them, I didn't yet. That was all that she says.
Skip that.
I found her. Over about minutes in a packet. She's got a coffee machine.
Okay, we'll go ahead. You can skip that. We'll get y'all's minutes. Number seven is to discuss, approve, disapprove, or request by Bible Malone to Commissioner's Court to pay all twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents of Bible Malone's legal fees in regard to cause number eleven oh-four zero zero one zero CDK, State of Texas versus Bible Malone. Ms. Malone has asked, has requested an opportunity to speak directly to Commissioner's Court regarding this matter, notified.
Good morning, Ms. [inaudible]. First of all, I thank you for putting this back on the agenda. I know we had discussed it a few weeks ago, but I wasn't on the agenda to speak, so I asked the judge to put it back on here, just to get my side of the story. As you know, a jury of my peers voted twelve and oh that all three charges against me were false, bank statements, timely investments, and payroll. Out of those three charges, only one is my statutory duty, which is bank statements. Part of the evidence brought to about me was part of the auditor's evidence that she had. I feel like this is a personal vendetta with the county attorney on behalf of me. There's been some issues. I did give a notice to the commissioners yesterday, a little summary of things of why I feel like this should be reimbursed on, if they found me guilty, I wouldn't be standing here, and I wouldn't be asking for reimbursement. It was frivolous, and how would you feel if a frivolous lawsuit with body and spew and a bunch of evidence that included paying someone for funeral leave or me doing my statutory duty, but other people aren't doing their statutory duties? We have cases that are backlog that aren't being tried, yet he finds time to try me. She doesn't stand up here and give monthly reports, quarterly reports as auditor like she's supposed to do, but yet she tries to have her moved me from office. It's personal vendetta, enough is enough. We need to move forward and start working together. We've got people back here complaining about their county roads. I live in the city, but I feel for them, but enough is enough. We need to move on and all start getting along. I'm here to ask that the Commissioner's Court pay the other half. You've already approved a half, pay the other half, and not leave me financially responsible for doing my job. It's just two people decided they don't like the way I do my job, and it's not good enough for them. Thank you.
The Commissioner's Court, with this issue being reconsidered, is, there are a couple of options. First of all, you know, with regards to the, a request under these circumstances, a public official who is sued for actions relating to their position can bring that suit before the Commissioner's Court to seek counsel to be retained at the beginning of that litigation, and can also go forward with a request for that payment upfront if counsel is not going to be appointed by the county. Then, or third, as you have today, is legally authorized for them to defend themselves in a request for the person. The reimbursement issue with regards to the amount or the total is an issue which is discretionary for this court. So the Commissioner's Court can decide to not pay any fees, or pay all of the fees, or anywhere in between them. You know, Ms. Yarder did make a point on procedurally, while I don't know that it would, it would affect its effectiveness, that the, the proper method to go through this would, for you to take action to either cancel or rescind the prior court's action with regard to the fifty percent plan. And then secondly, take action with regards to how much of that amount that you want to reimburse, should you change your mind, if you feel that other action needs to be taken. But that action could be either to pay no fees, or to pay all of the fees, or anywhere in between. You're not limited to only the next fifty percent from your prior court action. So that's up to the Commissioner's Court as well. Lastly, and I, you know, it's our position that the, you know, that all of the terms up to this point-
Wait, wait. When you say "our" position, you're talking about?
My law firm's legal opinion with regards to this one issue. The statute is very clear that under the circumstances facing the county today, the entitlement, should you go forward and approve the amount, is an entitlement to the reimbursement of fees. Therefore, before the statute would allow you, even if you authorized the one-hundred percent payment, you would have to have proved that that payment of the fee were paid by the requester before you could reimburse for those fees. So in other words, you can't, in this case, it's not a payment directly to her attorney, which would have been an option had she came up before the litigation occurred. It has to be a reimbursement. So the payment that is issued by the county must be a payment to this official after proof of payment is made, that she's made these payments to the, to the, to the attorney sufficient to the court's liking.
And we can, and that can be provided. And just, and in-
Cancelled checks, or whatever else is typically-
Well, if I may interject, what if this person didn't have twenty-nine thousand, some odd dollars?
It's a principal-
And can we give her a little time to raise the money, so she can pay the fees, and then we can come back and reimburse her?
Well, hey, once you take action, and unless the court takes some different action in the meantime, that action stands for the record. So currently, right now, after the, the court's action in the past, I contacted her attorney and informed him that I needed proof of the, the fees and reimbursement, and a copy of the, the attorney fee bill were provided, but I haven't gotten a copy of the reimbursement cost based on your last action.
I don't think you told us at the last meeting when we approved half the attorney's fees. I don't believe you ever raised that issue.
Now, we, we talked about that.
It was provided in writing.
It was written as reimbursement anyway. Yeah, and that's not a big deal.
Right. It was requested for reimbursement, and the statute only authorizes reimbursement, and our legal opinion provided to you to describe the reimbursement process.
And that's not, that's not an issue. That's not a problem, I should say.
What you're saying, on number seven, are you, I'm correcting, or am I wrong? You're saying that we can't, just coming back to full reimbursement, we can't do it today because we can't modify it, we have to first bring it on, put it on the agenda to counsel the other one?
No. No. This is, your agenda has to do with the Open Meetings Act complying. What that says is, the general public is entitled to know what you're going to talk about today. And what you're talking about today is the reimbursement of her attorney's fees related to this removal from office case. All the public knows that, and so they're here. So for her purposes of what's on the agenda, you can do whatever you want to with regards to her fees, because the public knew that's what you were going to talk and act on today. But that action, I would recommend, would take the form of a motion to rescind the action that the court related to her issue with the fifty percent, and move to make some other type of reimbursement authorization, should the court find that to be appropriate.
All in one motion?
Yeah, I mean, you could do it all in the same action. You don't have any specific, specific rules of procedure for your court that have been adopted by the court.
So the previous ones can be canceled or disregarded with this one?
Right. I mean, yeah, but the process would be, I move to rescind the prior action to court and adopt a one-hundred percent reimbursement, if that's what you want to do, or a zero percent reimbursement, or anywhere in between, if the court feels just.
Okay, but she has to pay these fees first, before we can reimburse them?
The statute specifically says reimburse. Reimbance requires payment.
That's not a problem, Carl. That's not a problem. We can't change statutes. Can't change statutes. That's not a problem to do that.
If the report would allow me, I would like to read a article that will be in tomorrow's paper, my request, and it, the headline, everybody here has a copy of it, I believe, and it says, "Victims of Political Attacks Pay Yearly." And I, and I read this, it says, "I love being an American, and I am so proud of my country and what it stands for. The privileges and rights of our citizens are second to none in the world. One of the many things we should be thankful for is the right to work and govern our personal lives without attack. As an elected official, I represent the needs of others. Recently, an employee who is paid thirty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars per year had to spend about twenty-nine thousand dollars to defend themselves against a political attack in order to fight for the right to make a living providing for themselves and their family. This is an injustice. Our employee went through all review procedures and was found innocent of all wrongdoing. This cannot establish a precedent in our community or local government. Those employees who can afford it the least will be penalized the most by not being able to defend themselves." And the author was, of course, Carl Humble. And let me read one more, one more thing. I don't know. Yeah, buddy's got a copy here. Attorney George Hyde, legal counsel retained by Corrins County Commissioner's Court, has provided options for the members of the court to vote on. On video, I stated the truth, all facts, no opinion. Our county attorney brought a lawsuit against Ms. Bible Malone due to no fault of her own. The lawsuit failed miserably by a vote of her peers, supporting her twelve to zero. As a result of this suit, a bill is currently due and payable. If this bill isn't fulfilled and satisfied, other subsequent lawsuits may be filed, interrupting county business. To briefly summarize the facts, public statements were made by the county attorney stating he would get rid of Ms. Bible Malone, abusing the powers of his office. Anyone can be singled out for this kind of abuse. On record, the county attorney has currently backlog twenty-three hundred cases. In fact, he has not tried a case in three or four years, but singled out and worked diligently around the clock to take this court to case, this case to trial. Ms. Malone was re-elected to her office by votes cast by the will of the people. Following the bulk of allegations that were made against her, lest we forget, in two thousand and nine, the county attorney, using the authority of his office, took aggressive action to remove the entire Commissioner's Court, who did not politically agree with him. Therefore, I press for Ms. Bible Malone's full reimbursement. I feel the need to clarify this bill represents only attorney's fees incurred by Ms. Malone and not any other expenses. I vote to pay in full Ms. Malone's legal bill. Respectfully submitted, Commissioner Carl Humble.
Do you have lots of signatures?
No. I would think that that's a motion.
Yes. I make a motion to pay her legal bill simple.
Rescind the first action and take a hundred percent?
I vote to rescind our prior motion in action and make a new motion to pay one-hundred percent of her legal bill. Twenty-nine thousand, some odd dollars.
Two-hundred-and-nine-five-thirty-six, huh? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Well- Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
I spoke with Mrs. Bible Malone yesterday, just briefly, spoke with her on the phone a minute thirty-six. And I told her that I would, you know, I would look into it. I told her that I wouldn't just, you know, leave her there, and I would, you know, it's, it's my job to do that. Well, I did look into it and everything, and from what I know of and what been told to me as of right now, I mean, and I know Vice explained her side, and, you know, other people have explained, and I've talked to the attorney and all, I really, honestly couldn't make a decision right now, because I did what you asked, I looked into it, I did, I did my job. But as of right now, I don't have the information to go ahead and vote either way on it. I mean, that's, I just don't have that information right now. I just, I wasn't there, I don't know what, I honestly, I openly, I'm not, you know, I don't fail the people of Corrins County by making this decision, or fail by or fail Commissioner's Court, but I'm being honest. Gary said for us to be honest, I'm always trying to be honest with him. I cannot make the decision to pay or not to pay right now without more facts. I wasn't there-
In the argument, the debate-
What was your motion last time? I don't, I don't know. What was your vote last time?
Not to go ahead and pay her either, because I didn't have the information, but I thought when that happened, I thought it was already, I thought it was settled. I didn't get this until yesterday.
Well, it'd be my thoughts, and I, I have not visited the FBI website in quite some time, but some of the things that they do is investigate corruption of government at any level. And this is just a big injustice, in my opinion, and I think it needs to be investigated. And I, if you're going to vote to pay or not to pay, it doesn't make any difference, yes, you should, you should have been involved. We are this court. We knew this was going on, and now everybody's putting their heads in the sand like they didn't know anything about it.
Because last time, we figured that it was already, it was going to be happening.
But James, you got sued along with me in two thousand and nine, did you not? By the same county attorney?
I wasn't worried about it. I didn't do nothing wrong.
And I didn't do anything wrong.
I, I, you don't have to spend any of your salary to pay yourself.
I told the attorney, you were sitting there, when I told the attorney-
I'm not, that's my normal tone.
That's not-
I told the attorney, I wasn't worried about it, because nothing was going to happen to me, because I didn't do nothing wrong.
And I didn't either, but yet I sell it, and the county has paid all your legal fees, and I think the same- fees and I think the same thing should happen here. I mean, it's not anything that I was doing against my statutes, I was following my statutes, it was just a personal vendetta and why should I have to be financially responsible?
Well, there's two things that the court needs to understand. One is that when the prior case occurred, the Commissioners came before the court before the litigation was ensued and obtained that approval for representation.
So they basically proved itself counsel.
Secondly is, is that the, rather than waiting until after, and then secondly is that that was a case which I don't believe actually that, if any, there were very minimal fees or meaning to that case because Judge Peoples threw it out before it got anywhere. And so I think that the circumstances.
So that meant it was frivolous.
Ms. Trump, if you'd like, let me go forward. It's that, I would agree with you that that case did not even meet the minimal standards to go forward. It, you know, it had no legal basis sufficient for Judge Peoples to even allow it to move forward. That case, the facts and circumstances that were alleged against each of the Commissioners are completely different than the facts and circumstances in this case. And so I strongly urge the court that they are not similarly situated and you cannot take one and compare it to this one because they're different. And so that needs to be a legal distinction that the court needs to be aware of.
And I have the original, Carl, and I have the original petition out of the 15 items that he brought against me alleging misconduct, which was completely thrown out by court, it was competency, was payroll issues. Three things out of the, I think, maybe 20 or 25 that he somehow magically kept coming up with, three things. Payroll, investments, and bank statements. I was doing that bad job of payroll investments and why did the auditor come up here and say, you know what, she doesn't know what she's doing, something needs to happen, instead of trying to remove me and help being part of that? Bank statements are part of my statutory duties and I have been trying to work with the Auditor's Office to help come up with three of the accounts that we're having trouble with and it yet to have to happen. And why not? She admitted under oath she's not doing her job, he's not doing his job either, but yet I'm doing my job and I get persecuted for it? I didn't come to Commissioners Court, that's counsel, because I needed somebody who knew what they were doing with removal of office. I couldn't have a $10,000 budget and plan to win.
You don't want to use the same firm that represents the Commissioners Court, in other words?
Right, and to this day, we have paid Dent Navarro almost $30,000 in special counsel.
Since the first of the year?
Why? To sit there and counsel you guys.
We've always used the same firm and I think my question here is fiscal responsibility and that's the, I mean, if we could waive the client attorney privilege, I can read this memo written by Ross Fisher so we can have it on record.
We would need to make a motion, have it seconded to the majority.
If there has been a motion, they even seconded already.
No, this is, this is, this is for purposes of the discussion, for them to waive attorney-client privilege so that they can discuss the legal opinion provided to the county.
I'd like to make that motion to waive that privilege and read that on record out loud, please.
We can do that within another motion.
Yes. Because it's for purposes of this discussion. So she made a motion to waive that.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Let me get that memo, please. This has been previously provided to the Commissioners and probably should have been read in full.
The one distinction, Judge, I'd like to make though.
Go ahead, I'm just reading the memo.
My law firm represents this county and I don't represent any individual Commissioner or any public official in this county unless there is a subsequent lawsuit which also involves their conduct that also involves the county. And that is a distinction that needs to be made. I do not represent any one of the individual Commissioners or any, you know, Sheriff Jalukka or Treasurer or the Auditor or anyone else in this county. I represent the county and so.
But yet we've paid $30,000 in legal fees so far for special counsel this year. I'm not sure why, and we have a county attorney standing here that we actually need outside legal counsel.
George, can I, can I ask you a question? Each one of us sitting here on the court has equal access to you, is that right?
As far as I'm aware, yes, sir. I have not been instructed by the county.
I can call you about anything that has to do with county business as long as it's a legal nature, is that correct?
If it's, if it's county business, yes, sir.
Hey, I've been informed otherwise, but.
Who informed you of that?
You did, Judge.
No, 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 you said, do we all have?
You told me the only reason.
Okay, going back to my case and you choose to side your little false.
No, I'm going to answer that because I said, as long as it's not personal.
You said if it had to do with the contract.
No, county business, county business.
Otherwise, I could not.
He's been counsel for how long and now you don't know the rules? I don't believe.
Rules change when great changes.
Everybody else has called him. This is background. This is to the Honorable Barbara Nibbershaw, Karnes County Judge, from Ross Fisher, Ross Fisher, Special Counsel to Karnes County, date August 12, 2011, payment of County Treasurer's attorney's fees in unsuccessful removal suit. Background, the Karnes County Attorney recently initiated a removal suit against the Karnes County Treasurer. After a jury trial, the jury found that the Karnes, that the county attorney had not proven the county treasurer incompetent, allowing the treasurer to remain in office. The county treasurer's attorney in the removal case has publicly indicated that the treasurer would ask the county to reimburse its fees for the representation. According to the Karnes Countywide, Attorney Mick McCamey stated, "We are going to seek reimbursement from the county for her attorney's fees and costs. There is precedent for that because she, because she is a county official who was sued in her official capacity as county treasurer." Question presented, if the county treasurer seeks reimbursement from Karnes County for her attorney's fees and costs associated with the removal suit, is the county obligated to reimburse her? The analysis is based on the facts presented to us and we ask that. If new facts or circumstances come to light, we might be allowed to modify our opinion Analysis, Attorney General has consistently implied that under the common law, a political subdivision may pay an officer's or employee's legal expenses only if it makes the following two determinations. First, that payment of the legal fees serves a public interest and not merely the defendant's private interest. And second, the officer employed committed with the alleged action or omission forming the basis of the lawsuit while acting in good faith within the scope of his or her official duties. If these two prongs are met, a political subdivision may pay for the legal expenses of public official in civil cases brought against them individually. The Texas Local Government Code provides for legal defense of county officers or employees, Section 157-901 reads, A, a county official or employee sued by any entity other than the county with which the official or employee serves for an action arising for the performance of public duty is entitled to be presented by the District Attorney of the district in which the county is located, the county attorney, or both. B, if additional counsel is necessary or proper in the case of an official or employee provided under counsel under subsection A, or if reasonably appears that the act complained may form the basis for the following of a criminal charge against the official or employee, the official or employee is entitled to have the Commissioners Court of the county employ and pay private counsel. C, a county official or employee is not required to accept a legal counsel in this section. This provision does not entitle a county officer to legal representation at public expense in criminal cases. The Texas Attorney General has once addressed the propriety of using county funds to reimburse attorney's fees in defending a removal lawsuit. In that opinion, the Attorney General opined that it was improper to rely upon the statutory predecessor of the Local Government Code 157-901 as authority to pay fees of officials who were subject to removal suit under the statutory predecessor to Chapter 87 of the Local Government Code. That opinion focused on the fact that the removal suit must be brought in the name of the state of Texas, which remains requirement in Section 87.018. The predecessor to the Section 157-901 applied to suits brought by non-political entities. Therefore, the Attorney General reasoned that a removal lawsuit brought in the name of the state of Texas, a political entity, did not entitle the county officer to legal expenses. However, the current version of Section 157-901 is narrower and applies to suits brought by any entity other than the county with which the official, official, excuse me, or employee serves. Therefore, an argument can be made that if the removal suit was for an action arising from the treasurer's public duty, the treasurer may have been entitled to representation by the District Attorney, the County Attorney, or outside counsel employed and paid by Commissioners Court. Obviously, since the county attorney was handling the removal suit, it would have been improper for him to defend the county treasurer in the same proceeding. The county treasurer may have been able to argue that she was entitled representation by the District Attorney or that was have to, entitled to have the Commissioners Court employ and pay private counsel if she proved the suit arose from performance of her public duties. However, the county treasurer did not avail herself of the statutory mechanism. Apparently, she chose to retain her own legal counsel in accordance with Section 157-901C. Consequently, she has left to ask the county to reimburse her of the fees she paid for her own private counsel. The final question to consider is whether the treasurer's success in the removal suit somehow entitles her to reimbursement of her legal expenses. All relevant statutes and opinions make the reimbursement of legal fees in a civil case discretionary on the part of the county. Enjoying an analogy with defending oneself in a criminal proceeding, the Attorney General has opined although it is not required to do so, a city council may spend public funds to reimburse a city council member for the legal expenses of defending against an unjustified prosecution for Open Meeting Act violations. Therefore, absent a county official availing herself counsel pursuant to Section 157-901 of the Local Government Code, any decision to reimburse legal fees is not mandatory but is within the discretion of the Commissioners Court. The conclusion, the Commissioners Court may reimburse the county treasurer for legal fees incurred in the process of defending her removal suit if the Commissioners Court finds, first, that such reimbursement serves the public interest and not merely the county's treasurer's private interest, and, second, that the conduct upon which the lawsuit was based involved the county treasurer acting in good faith and within the scope of her duties. However, the Commissioners Court is not obligated to reimburse the county treasurer for her legal fees in defending the removal suit. End of memo.
I have a few things that I'd.
And you did have this memo, Mr. Hummer.
I would like to see a full investigation of the county attorney's office. George, can Mr. Bussman be sued personally and individually for these legal fees? Before you answer that, let me just go on. I believe this amounts to corruption of government and I believe that there was a conspiracy of government movies to do this. And I think there needs to be a full and complete investigation done because I know enough about attorneys and whatnot to know that they're, they're going to find case law to reflect your feelings and what you want to see happen. And that doesn't necessarily make it true. And it can be construed a lot of different ways. And this is a new court and, you know, they have different ideas, that's fine, but this, this just cannot stand. This, this was wrong and there needs to be a full investigation.
It just goes back to the reckless lawsuit.
Hold on. With regards to some investigation of the county attorney, that's not on the agenda. But I do understand you made those comments because you feel strongly there is a public purpose supporting the reimbursement of these fees because of the, that, that's the basis of that public purpose is that public officials should not be subjected to this kind of conduct because you think it's illegal. That, that is appropriate under the Open Meeting Act. But to go into more of an investigation of another party, that's not part of her reimbursement. So we can't talk about that on this agenda item, but that can be a future agenda item for the court if the court wishes.
And my, my only question here is, my, my question is, when I got this memo, it's fiscal responsibility is what I thought we were supposed to be providing. And she, the only thing that I'm reading that, that Mr. Fisher said is she could have asked us.
And then what would you have done, given me a $10,000 budget and chose whoever you wanted to? I had the option to pick my own attorney and that's what I chose to do because I needed someone who was familiar with removals from office and that is who my attorney had recommended that I do. I mean, I had that choice and obviously with me still standing here, the lawsuit was frivolous and it wasted a lot of time, a lot of county money, a lot of effort, hardwood bills ran up because when we asked for discoveries, they weren't done in a timely manner. My lawyer had to write a letter of sanctions to Mr. Bussman, we had to have another meeting, we tried to do depositions, he didn't want a county court reporter, we had to wait for the court reporter. Some of the bills were his own fault because he wasn't doing what he's supposed to be doing.
And out of those 2,300 cases, I believe 300 of them are DWIs, is that correct, Mr. Bussman?
Excuse me, that's not on the agenda either, please stay with me.
It just proves the point that out of all the cases that needs to be tried, he picked this one. It was basic personal.
Yeah, I mean, there is a motion and a second to rescind the prior action and reimburse that 100% of the fees associated with this case. We're in the discussion process at this point and so if there's further discussion, you can continue with that discussion or someone can, can call a vote or request a vote.
Did anybody else discuss this yesterday? I heard it was discussed through the Commissioners.
Yes.
I want to know, these fees discussed prior to this meeting?
I went to the Commissioners myself and talked to them.
By yourself?
Carl rode with me, but he did not speak on behalf. I talked.
Did anybody sitting on this court discuss to pay or not to pay these legal fees way before this?
The only person that I.
Did you have any discussions with Commissioner Yower or whatever about this?
Carl, we came before this meeting last time.
I don't understand what you're getting at, Carl, but you're way off base.
When we came before this meeting and the judge made a motion to pay half the fees, I hesitated, she asked us there a second. I hesitated for a few seconds and I thought about it. My thoughts were, I haven't seen this bill, I don't know what it's for. If we can get by with paying half the fees, that'd be a good way to get out of it. We had the opinion that she just read, Mr. Ross Fisher, that stated all of her options that she did not seek come to the court beforehand to get approval. And so therefore I thought, all right, if we can pay half of this, let's pay half of it and get it over with, get it behind us. So I seconded the motion and the motion carried.
I'm glad you're here because you listened to me.
And I was sitting by that today. We still have the same opinion that she had the right to come to us before and I can understand why she did it. She had the right to have the District Attorney represent, I can understand that, understand all of it, I understand she had the bill. If it's up to me, what I do with bills, if they come in, I don't think they're right, I vote the person I'm negotiating. And I thought if we get by paying half of this and get it over with, get it behind us, that's a quick way to do it, so I voted for it last time. I'll stick, I'll stick by that today.
Okay, well, I just want to say that I hope there was not a conspiracy, but I think if there was one, it will be able to be proved quite easily.
Right here, the memo is right here.
And just to care for the court, Carl Hummer wasn't with Vi when she spoke with me. I spoke with her on the phone, she, she called me in the morning and called her back at 4:00 and then at 5:00, all she did was go drop off a piece of paper and she was on the phone. I'm just, just to care for the court that Carl Hummer was not with you when you spoke with me.
Right, she's telling me something, so.
Yeah, Vi and Carl came this evening, she didn't follow it up, he was there, but she didn't have the same thing here. They came together to the annex and cars were all sides, you know, you could hear what we were saying, but they did not speak. Is there a way that you can get the money from whoever filed suit against you?
No, I asked if I could, if I could sue the county attorney for frivolous lawsuit and under the law, he has the right to do that. So he basically is not, I'm not able to do that. And I don't feel like I should financially be responsible for doing my job and that's what I was doing. I was doing my job, it's just not up to his, or to the law in the sense that, in fact, and that's what boiled down to. People get paid every two weeks.
In other words, what you're trying to say is, we're going to have to pay for y'all fighting amongst each other.
I'm tired of fighting.
I would.
I'm tired of fighting.
The money you're going to have to use something to raise this out because I don't think we should have to pay for somebody else's, the debtors.
But that's what it was and that's what it was.
Well, that doesn't have to be passed.
It was proved.
I'm just working off the.
It was proved. We had 12 people to say that the three charges that the judge finally decided on.
I don't think anybody ever should have.
Did you know what the county attorney was doing, Judge?
Yes, you were.
I went in there twice.
Were you aware of this lawsuit?
I had my own court. I, I knew about it, but I wasn't even here the first day I've been.
But you were a witness, you shouldn't have been in the courtroom anyways.
I wasn't a witness.
Bob, was she a witness? She was on the witness list. You're on the witness list.
I wasn't even here. It's hard to be here when you're out of state.
Well, I'm sorry, but you were on the witness list.
That might be nice, but if Carl's tested by out of state, go ahead.
It goes back again.
I just can't believe, as judge of this county, you're not known.
That's enough. Goes back again to the frivolousness of this.
I have this memo, and, and I, this is the memo that I worked off, and this is all I worked off, is what, I mean, I, I'm not gonna go ask Bob what his opinion is, if I. If they wanna fight, I, that's why I called and I asked for an opinion. What do we do? I mean, I can't ask Bob for an opinion.
That's the worst thing you can do to me, is try to remove me from office, and that's what he tried to do.
So who should we ask for an opinion?
Attorney General, in that regard, I mean, I think that the, the opinion here may, if there was any question, may resolve some of that. Our work here is nonpartisan, and I don't know how many times I have to say that, is that we don't work with public entities, with different elected officials, and Republicans and Democrats, and pros and liberals and conservatives, without the ability to represent the county. That is what my office does, that is what we've been doing for over 20 years for counties and cities all over the state of Texas. This isn't the only county Commissioners' Court, or the only city councils that we deal with who have struggles and conflicts politically. It's not the only times that, you know, their ability to have a resource has been attacked, even in this county. And so, you know, by providing the memo, it's clear that the memo was not partisanship. It wasn't in favor or against. It's providing this Commissioners' Court with the law that governs their conduct. What their decision is, is up to them. That's not what the legal support is providing them. And to clarify Bob's role, while Bob has been very gracious to do a lot of support and assistance to the county, there isn't a constitutional mandate that requires a county attorney to provide legal support or assistance to the county Commissioners' Court absent a request for a written opinion. And that's all that is required of a county, a county attorney in his office. And so when there are additional issues or where he has certain prosecutorial obligations which may create a potential conflict, as in this case, it is very appropriate and in fact, common for many counties to seek outside counsel, such as your county has, for this and other issues when those issues arise. And so I hope that provides more clarification to the county Commissioners' Court with regards to the work that we do.
And again, we've paid this law firm almost $30,000 this year for special counsel.
Guys, I don't know, but I'm pretty embarrassed up here right now, so y'all made a motion, and I am. Y'all made a motion, you seconded, you know, where I stand right now, because she asked me to look into it tomorrow, yesterday, and I did. And with that, looking into it, it just arose more questions on my part, just like you just stated right now. It just, just left me more, you know? And then he's already stated his part, I don't know about the judge, but, you know, I think we should just go forth with it, because we could sit here and argue all day long.
Then you call a vote. That's what you, you ask the judge.
Okay, so I had a motion.
I thought we already took a vote. The motion had a second.
Right, right, that's what I said.
Nothing of vote. On the motion.
Right, she's gonna call. Well, I don't know what you mean.
So, and I guess the discussion was, did you finish, I mean, did you say what you were saying?
I said what I said.
What did you say, James?
I said that the only thing that, from what I've looked into, it just arose more questions, and I can't either go either way right now.
All right, I said I would, I'd have to stick to the decision made last week, that I wouldn't change it to pay all of it today. I would still stick to paying half of it.
I, I still stick with my decision, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No, the motion was made to pay all of it. You need to go back to the original.
Current motion on the table. I want to make sure the record's clear on this, because that's what she deserves. The, the current motion on the table is to rescind the prior action of this Commissioners' Court and authorize 100% reimbursement of these fees under the statute. And so that's the motion here currently, which you moved, you seconded, and then you just voted against. So, I mean, we just, and we want to make sure it's clear.
And we have a problem because when she asked for a vote, he said aye too, so that lifted to three, so we have to...
Well, no, because he voted no, and he was the mover.
And he voted yes.
Yeah, that's why you need to recall the vote. If you could recall the vote.
Why do you think I said I was embarrassed?
Okay.
So does everyone understand the motion?
Are we, what, I don't, so she's not gonna get reemoted anything? It's rescinding?
You need to recall the vote.
Recall the vote. Okay, recalling the vote.
Because everyone was mixed up with regard to what the motion was on the table.
Okay, I make a motion to a rule.
Well, the motions are in there. They only have two votes.
It is seconded.
Right, the motion is made and seconded, and so...
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And that was, the motion failed.
This county attorney ever tries to sue you?
Yes.
So the motion had failed because...
The motion fails through you two. Hold on, Sheriff, what is that?
They have the minutes.
Okay.
Excuse me?
That, well, I saw it, and I couldn't see what it was.
I was gonna give it, I'll hand out to y'all.
Did you give it to a sheriff? Excuse me, excuse me, there is to be no disruption of a public meeting. If anybody wants to go outside and do something or talk, please don't do it in here. We're having a Commissioners' Court meeting, and we will, Sheriff, I, I will not tolerate this, and it does say utterance. We don't need this, we really don't need this. Please don't.
And it is a Class B, Mr. Mitterby, Trident County Court. So that's kinda where we're at on this. We've been doing this a long time.
So, George, so this still stands right now because y'all heard what I'm, I'm ordering them not to pay her or to pay her is because this is lack of evidence on my part, I couldn't make that decision, but I did vote against it because that was the only way I had to vote. So I want to know, so as of right now, she's still getting paid half, and I was the motion of the last time.
That's correct. Is it, it's upon proof of repayment, then she's entitled to pay.
So the pub, so the public...
However, the court still needs to deal with the budget issue with regards to reallocation of funds within the budget of payments. That's still an issue before she can actually be paid, it has to be funded. So that's an issue to amend your budget to pay the...
Okay. Now, she's came one time last to ask me, "Please, can she come back again?"
That's up to the court as to whether the court will undertake that issue.
I'm just asking, could she legally come back again? Or could she tell everyone, you know, "Well, I want y'all to look further deep into it, and do this, do that," or what else can be, I mean, is it, is it in, does it in here? Or can she come back to us and ask us for full payment?
Well, now, once we pay her, once it's put on the agenda to pay her, I don't know what we do there. That's...
What's ours?
Because she did request that after the outcome of the day, that we put it on the agenda for payment.
Don't you remember how many times the council, when you made the contract, we called the agenda like three times?
Well, I understand, but this is a different case, you know? So I wanted to, I didn't know what to...
She's trying to make some kind of case here, really, I didn't understand.
Yeah. It's up to the court. The court controls its agenda.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So if the court wants it on the agenda every, every time you need, you can have it on the agenda every time you want. If the court doesn't want it on the agenda, they don't have to put it on the agenda.
And basically, anybody, a member of the court can put it on.
That's a good question. Any public member can go to anybody and have something put on the agenda.
But even if all the other courts say no, one of us can say yes, and we still vote.
I lost one, I've never refused any. And I didn't lose it, I was in love with it. Thank you, Sheriff. I already have them all though, sir. You want to give some, share some with George here?
Sorry about that, guys. Ladies and gentlemen.
Don't trust me, you don't trust me, read it yourself. That way you can call George.
Okay, Sheriff, you have to do it on the third. Yeah? You got August the third?
I've read them, if y'all want me to go through them, so I got my part.
I got August the ninth, sixteenth. What is it, the third, the ninth, and the sixteenth, is right? Y'all, you got the third, the ninth, and the sixteenth?
If you'll put them in order with me and you'll go with me, I'll tell you where I'm on them. You're not gonna be waiting on one because one's missing, I sound like this is last one.
I got three and nine right here. The third and the ninth. You don't have the third and the ninth, you're not. You got the sixteenth? You got two of them? Somebody need a thirty-first? You still need a sixteen, Tracy? You got an extra sixteen? Let me look over mine, I'll give you mine. It's a short one anyway.
If you look on the first one, the first one's on...
Sixteen.
I'm sorry. Can you do this?
Carl, you got a third, ninth, sixteenth, thirty-first?
Everybody will look on the third, number six. I had a note from Carol that says that on number six, we did not... I'm sorry, because I gave y'all the minutes, I didn't give y'all the eyes. It said, "Discuss, approve, disapprove, additional annex furnishings and moving costs and possible budget amendment." And on number six, it says, "Discussion that was held suggested that adult probation and the Department of Public Safety departments move in the new annex to a later date so that their furnishings and expenses would be in next year's budget." So I don't think we really approved or disapproved anything, the discussion we had was just there. Is that okay, George?
I mean, yeah, it's just, I mean, if it's just discussion regarding that issue, that's... I mean, these are your minutes to reflect what went on.
That's what happened, is we just... So I don't know if anything needs to be changed there or not. Y'all need some time to look these over, we can recess, or everybody's still out sitting here muddling through these. On the ninth of August, on number 25, on a note, it just says, "Payment of bills." It doesn't say that we made a motion to pay bills. We did approve the bills in open court, though. I guess we can note on, can we note on number 25, approve to pay in open court? Will you please note on number 25, on the ninth, that bills were approved in open court? Because y'all signed those. We usually make, make a motion that day, we didn't make a motion.